Yay, okay, we're good.
All right, so I'd like to open our school committee meeting, business meeting on six oh four on December eleventh, twenty twenty four. And to start this, so how are we running tonight's business meeting, I'm sorry?
The business meeting is just an abbreviated version of our typical meeting, so we have no student report. If you have any comments, that's fine, we don't have any subcommittee reports. My report is the budget.
Yep.
So we just have two pieces of business which we're hoping to get any care of tonight.
One voucher and then the, or no last just try.
Uh, we have the vouchers and then we've got two, a fee adjustment and a proposal on maybe saving a few, few dollars.
All right, great. Due to the short meeting, I don't have a chairman's report tonight, so we'll go right into uh, our funds following vouchers and the first vote is to approve voucher one zero three zero and
That's it.
That's it, right, yeah, okay. I could have a motion. Second.
Second.
Any questions? Right, then we'll take a vote, all those in favor? Let's see now. Moving on, we have two different trips or one trip to approve tonight and then another proposal as well for or is that later?
That's later.
Okay, right. So, do we have minutes from last night?
We don't have minutes. We have to, we got them in, but I had already said.
All right, so, and just to vote to approve travel for next year or for this year?
Yes, technically for next calendar year.
So, did everyone have a chance to review the documentation that was sent over?
It was twenty twenty six.
It's twenty, April twenty twenty six.
Yeah.
That's what I had said next.
That's, I thought it was next year of my seventh grader. By that, it's not this spring.
No, no.
Nice like that.
All right, so with that, does anyone have any questions or I guess we should have a motion to approve the travel?
Make a motion to approve the travel to Spain with Mr. Spitzberg.
Second. We just add for spring of twenty twenty six. Just blanket, just blanket.
Is there a trip for spring of twenty five?
No, there is not, it's every other year we went to Costa Rica in our last trip, so this one could be to Spain, I can talk about.
Been there a French trip up? I don't know.
There is a music trip.
Yeah, so I guess my two, just my comments on this, and I'm sorry for getting confused, is I was, Julie and I were working on kind of tightening up, getting approved before you start to promote, I just made the assumption that with consumer wars and full promotion that it was happening in spring, so good news. Um, it is just getting back into the swing of some procedures and helping people understand that just because something's been approved generally once doesn't be
Right.
You know, just because you've done a band trip doesn't mean the band trip's always likely will be approved, but we have to go through the process, so um, thanks for letting me know that that was already put out of the class. Yeah, we're already in it. So we're just trying to wrangle them down, tighten up the process, but Robbie's here to answer questions for tonight.
Uh, two questions. One, can you remind us why we approved this? Because I think the, I think the last time we talked about this, it's not a school sponsored trip, right?
You're approving it because we have students. We are advertising for the company, we are, we have a liaison to the company, but we're not organizing or we're not organizing the trip, we're not creating the trip, we're not, we're a, we're contracting with a company to do it on our behalf and it's over vacation, so it's more, it's not really a school curriculum based trip, it's more of a leisure trip.
But school rules apply.
It's a good rule supply because they are as the chaperone, so it's a little bit of a
Let's not be crazy here.
It's in the middle, so we don't have to ensure the trip, we don't have to do all of the logistics of organizing it, getting plane fares and such. But what you're doing tonight is really what needed to be done probably in the spring is that the trip needs to be proposed, you need to approve for us to solicit students to participate in the EF trip. You're also approving that by doing this, kids who are in our charge and will be traveling with a chaperone provided by the school um, have our permission to travel internationally and leave the state overnight.
Thank you.
So it's a little bit of a mixed bag and it's not very clear, which is why we get caught up in.
So thank you for that clarification. My second question has to do with consistency with our broader efforts around attendance. I know that, you know, we are pushing hard particularly this year to make sure kids are in school all the time and you know, if parents are going on trips, we discourage them from leaving a few days early, but we seem to be doing that with this trip. And I, I fully agree with the value of the kids for the kids who are going, but for the kids who aren't going, we're down a teacher for a couple of days, we don't have subs and those kids are out of their other classes.
I can address that too, or you can, whatever, I don't know how this works.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just asking because we're making such an effort to not, to encourage parents to not do this. And yet we are, in essence, endorsing this.
Do you mind if I say something? Uh, so, you know, for, for a language teacher, it's a cultural linguistic immersion tour where, you know, this is a trip that's recognized by our athletic department and that's a trip. Um, there's no guarantee that we're going to be missing school, stands the eleven days of vacation. Um, we have one day before or one day after that we could miss, but they haven't bought the flights yet. Um, and that window is for a either side. Um, so for one day, um, you know, the incredible experience these kids get linguistically, culturally, all the chaperones or teachers, the connection that those students get with those teachers, the connection that those kids from all these different social groups get with each other, um, you know, the sense of, you know, just inspiring travel. Uh, all that stuff for me is well worth a day if it is indeed a day, and I don't think, I mean, it may so, but I totally hear what you're saying about attendance.
And I, and I totally appreciate everything you say, I'm not negating that at all, I'm just saying the, the attendance part of this. And just to be clear, the materials you said said that they could leave as early as the Wednesday before.
Uh, on the most recent stuff, it was one day either side of the which I can show you.
Okay.
So I think that's, that's a great response in terms of why the trip is important and why the days are lost days, so to speak, but that it is out of sync with what we're communicating when the state allows us to determine as a, an excused absence.
What about DECA?
If you miss a day of school, the state is no longer recognizing why you've missed that day.
But do you think that we should cancel DECA?
I'm not saying we should do anything or not do anything, I'm saying, yes, it is out of sync with what we're communicating to parents. Are, so when the students go to DECA, are they also marked absent? Usually they leave early, but if they are going to national competition, no, they're not, yeah, they're marked absent, they're not in school, but they are on a school function, so that's something that we're just going to have to wrestle with in terms of how Desi interprets. Well, do, do we mark them absent though? They are not in school, so we think of it as an excused absence. We think that they're attending DECA, we might even say, hey, okay, if you have the trip, the chances of family to go to Paris, we get that. If they're not in school, Desi registers it as they're not in school. So what we're doing locally, what we can agree to locally is different than necessarily how Desi's going to interpret that little mark when it tallies up our accountability. I'm happy to do more, I didn't think attendance was going to be the focus of the conversation, so I didn't really look at the attendance policies in preparation for tonight. So I don't want to misspeak or dismiss something, I'm happy to do some follow up.
And, and to me, I could care less about how Desi interprets it, all I'm, I'm saying is the messaging we're sending to parents. That's all I'm saying.
Chris, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I, I see your point, I also think that there is a difference between me pulling my kid on Fridays to go skiing versus a, a trip that is going to support the learning and I feel target that sort of thing. But my, my clarifying question was regarding Jake's first question about why do we vote on this? Um, I know it's still absent because it's not a school sponsored, however, we're dealing with absences and I know people are super understanding and dealing with that. But in terms of sport, I have heard this question, we do allow students like that, they're, they don't get docked in their sports.
Well, there's a whole makeup tie, so I didn't know we were going here. Um, there's a whole, they miss so many practices, they can't play right when they get back, you're also
If it's an academic trip though, that my knowledge, that doesn't apply.
Don't you have to do so much like physical practice while you're gone to be game ready when you get back?
Yeah.
In the benefit of you being not only a teacher but a coach, is that if you have athletes?
I will honestly tell you with my heart in my hands, like, we do run with the athletes, like, we keep them in shape, Lauren DuBois is going, I'm going.
Good time.
Also, yeah, it's good, Cammy's here, she can help. Like, my general understanding is that it's recognized as an athletic, I mean, an academic trip, so, but it's all that stuff, it's not a vacation. It's an academic.
So can we break this into two pieces? Can we either yay or nay the trip, but if we feel like we need more time, that's totally within the purview of the committee to say, no, we can't approve this right now. Um, secondly, can I collect all of your attendance based questions and we can deal with attendance specifically? Because this is kind of spun out into an area, I just didn't anticipate and that's on me.
All right, two, a question.
Well, I, I just have a comment, I, I want to just acknowledge that while we talk about attendance and affair, um, we have also seen as this committee, a number of trips that used to happen at this school no longer happening and the opportunity to do something meaningful and beneficial that truly expands students' horizons and is completely aligned with our strategic initiative. I think that going too far down the rabbit hole of attendance, we're not well served.
I had a quick question, maybe I missed it, but what, is it just seniors and juniors that are?
Yeah, it's opened up for the first two days of signup, it's just seniors and juniors and it's capped it. Uh, I took forty two kids to Costa Rica. So we're capping it at thirty six, we'll probably get fifty six, you know, juniors and seniors, but if it needs to be opened up to software as we do. We just gotta go in that chronological order, because again, I go every other year, I just want to be able to operate. It is the older kids.
Yeah, makes sense. There are no other questions, are we ready to vote? All those in favor? Let's see now, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Um, next on our agenda is now this doesn't require a vote, or the transportation? Oh, okay, so to open up the conversation, I would like a let me see, how should this be phrased, I don't have, I have
Can we give it a introduction? So Cammy's here to help, Cammy and Michelle have been working together to put together a proposal for leasing some small vans or small buses, large vans um, to take care of some of our small teams and student activities that need runs during the day, but are either cost prohibitive or we can't get Salter to reliably provide us the transportation. They, they worked it up, I know there is an overview that was in your packet, I don't know who wants to take the lead in giving the brief introduction here and then we can have a discussion about it.
Yeah, I'll start and Cammy certainly can get into the details a little bit more. So we have found what other, a lot of other districts are doing right now is they're leasing these small activity vans um, that hold twelve to fifteen passengers for student activities, smaller athletic events and whatnot. So we looked into the feasibility of it and come to find out it would actually be more of a cost savings measure for us, which is a fabulous benefit that we really weren't anticipating too much, we were looking at it more of a convenience factor. Um, these vehicles would be on school property, we would lease them, we would have our staff drive them. Um, mostly athletic coaches or team advisors for whatever student activity it would be. Um, and these vehicles would be available for two fifteen, two thirty departure, because oftentimes Salter or whatever bus company we're using is not able to provide drivers right at the dismissal of our school day. So this seems to check a lot of boxes in terms of our needs, so it when we started looking into it, it almost became too good to be true, to be honest, and then Cammy did this fabulous um, cost analysis and it looks like we will be saving a substantial amount of money by trying this out. Um, we also had a conversation with leasing company last week and to find out, because typically the leases run either nine months or twelve months, so they're able to do a five month lease if we want, six month lease. Um, and it only runs for the school years, we would not have the vehicles over the summer months, we would not have to pay for it during the summer and we'd get a brand new lease in September if, if this was a activity that proves to be fruitful the way we, we had hoped or imagined it would be. Um, so we have a little bit of a write up on it, basically saying, you know, it's going to provide some transportation that is much needed. Um, it will actually expand our ability and some of our students being able to attain attend some events such as MIAA leadership workshops and right now we just don't have the capacity to get them there and it's not really cost effective. Um, because anytime we lease a small bus or anything, we're, we're talking probably between six hundred and nine hundred dollars depending on the length of the of the trip and the distance. Um, and, and like I said, as an added benefit, we were actually seeing reduction in costs overall, so this is why we're bringing it forward to you. Um, we have some safeguards in place, we would be pulling driver records on all the drivers, um, making sure the query has been done within the past year, making sure that there is no, um, one adult with one single student, so we always make sure that there were at least two students. Um, so we've thought about a lot, there may be other things we haven't thought about, but overall seems to be a win win situation. So we were hoping to move forward to this, with this, but we wanted to bring it to your attention for your approval. Um, and that's why Pam put it on the agenda with potential vote to approve, because we didn't know, we wanted to just discuss it tonight and bring it back at our next meeting for approval, or if it's just a win win situation and we go home and we could have the vans as soon as a few weeks after we get approvals. We approve them tonight, we could have them within the next three to four weeks.
Any questions or anything else? Yeah, I would say to summarize, Cammy has done a fantastic job working, Michelle on this and really promoting the idea, answering all of my skeptical questions, and I think it kept, checks a couple of boxes, obviously, transportation is relatively quiet right now, but it's a problem in that one way, so it stresses that, and at this point, we're talking about a little bit, every penny counts. Um, and there's a good amount of savings here that can help the bottom line of student activation guidelines. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut off your question.
Um, can I, um, what's the downside here? Because I'm not seeing. We haven't come across that yet. We really haven't.
And I guess following up on that point, um, I feel like this was, we discussed this a few, couple of years ago and Bobby was of the perspective that there are real challenges in, I mean, this wouldn't be owning, leasing your own vehicles and kind of operating as a bus committee, I, this all sounds completely great. I guess I just want to make sure, is there is there some change that's happened since we last looked at it that makes this a more viable option? And I know Michelle, yeah, we're here, we're not
Happy to jump in, we were looking at it last, we were looking at it for special education transportation, which has a higher level of responsibility, right? If we don't have a driver that comes in, we're responsible for making that run no matter what happens. Um, so this is really just having a couple of lease vans for student activities, nothing that of course, we always want to get the kids where they're supposed to go, but there's no obligation for them to attend the leadership summit, and if for some reason the person who's supposed to take them is out that day, they just so we're not looking to get back into the busing business, I don't think we could get there without pulling out a whole structure and stuff.
Actually, just to expand on that, um, these vehicles would not be available to take a student to or from their home. They're not licensed in that manner, there's a separate license requirement to do that and it's a separate um, vehicle classification that has to be utilized for that, so these are only student activity, we can only go from a school, right? Absolutely, okay, so it would be another whole layer of rules and regulations if it were to go to or from a student's address.
I would be curious, Jake, can I ask, so sorry, sorry.
Um, two questions, one is, can you give us a sense of a scale of those savings? I gave a couple of examples in the materials of, you know, expensive to do it the traditional way, but no sense of like how much, much less or how much we save this way, just, and not, not specific to the scale would be great. And second, does that, would, would the cost include, I assume we're talking about staff driving? And are, is there, and they have to get, you know, some, some little training to do that or whatever? Is there any concern about the staff getting that training and or do we have insurance premiums because of that, because of staff driving students?
We will have a slight increase in our insurance, um, just because now we will need to cover these leased vehicles that we don't currently have. But the cost savings without the insurance calculated in is substantial enough. See, we're working with insurance right now to see what the quote would be. The potential savings calculated was fifteen to seventeen thousand dollars. So, awesome, pretty significant.
Okay, that's
So I'm anticipating our insurance to be less than two thousand a year.
I think it's I think the saving, that's crazy, given the topic of the evening, but the savings is almost secondary to the
Absolutely.
Increased service and the potential opportunity for students participating. And then, and they're safe, so it's like we could actually do, do more for less. Yep.
Once they're more likely to get to their activities on time, because Salter's been a disgrace.
And it's just this, I mean, we're still working with Salter, the football team can't fit in the van, right? So this is the, like, the golf team.
Golf team, sailing team.
Maybe the math club.
Yeah, math club.
Yeah, math team, science team, they dug up. Need the smaller vans. It would also be robotics, sound waves, we're doing dementia expanded cores, they have trips to the elementary school and stuff like that.
Depending on the size of the cast, you might be able to get the drama vest team to the performances. What did Bernie Bill have to say? I assume that we passed this to lawyers and they
We didn't this time, I actually instituted this in Triton many years ago, two thousand nineteen, Triton was like the guinea pig to do this, um, and it had no legal issues whatsoever back then in many, many districts.
There's not an added layer, I know that personally, if I were teaching, I would feel like I was taking on another responsibility if I'm now teaching, coaching and driving my students between that we don't
In, you're where I was to, to answer your question, why wouldn't we do this? And I think when it was proposed, I when I first arrived, we just would pop over to Gloucester and rent a car and take kids places and I was taken aback, so we've come a long way to life. So this, it took me some time to hear about the examples from other districts, kind of get walked through the process. And I think to your point, Kate, it's such a limited number of people who will be engaging in this and they have to do so willingly. And so I think what they that convinced me of, but what I've heard when they were describing how this would work is, well, something, someone like the golf boat would much prefer to be in control of his own destiny instead of having have hope that the bus arrives and hope that we can get to that tee time and hope we can compete that day, so you're going to get a willing participant who is more than happy to do the training and drive the van. My other concern, and they addressed it, is I never want an adult looking with one student or one student alone, adult, there always should be a group that's being transported, so I've I've come around on that.
I, I do just want to make sure, and I'm sure you're doing this, but I just want to make sure that we do it, that we check on the kind of liability of having staff driving. If an accident were to happen and a kid got injured, well, one of our staff was driving, what is the implication of that?
Yes, well, actually district and to that staff.
Yes, exactly.
Yes, no, we actually have to have our staff driving these vehicles, it is a requirement of liability policy on these vehicles.
And no adult, unless there is an extenuating circumstance of legality, if you're in the capacity of your job, you're covered by district and you don't have any upside. So like we said, it's proposed for discussion and initial feedback tonight, if you need a little time to digest, that's fine, we can come back on the seventh and still make a protest.
Yeah, make a motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
So is there further discussion?
Um, when we said that we cannot pick students up at their homes, can we pick students up or drop them off at places other than the school or their destination?
At a different school, like Essex?
Where is, yeah, where is the I mean, what determines what the destiny, like, if you, if we are on a van that is going, for example, to Ski Bradford and it stops at Essex Elementary and picks up more students and then goes and then comes back and drops off the middle schoolers who had picked up here at Essex Elementary because they live in Essex.
I can, so we'll operate in the same way we do with our athletics transportation, where we have students that want to get dropped off at Essex on the way home, we'll stop at Essex Elementary and then continue, so it would be the same route, so the only drop off spots would be Manchester Memorial, the middle high school and Essex Elementary.
All right, then are we ready to vote or do we need to name this specifically besides the proposal? Then I'll take a show against all those in favor? Let's see now, thank you.
Thank you, yay. Thank you very much.
I need to run.
You guys both need to run.
I'll be back.
You're still good. So, what is next on the agenda or do we have?
I'm sorry. Next is our pre K fees. We, we did have a
We did.
More money making.
Two from each, two from each district. Two from each, I don't know what you're saying.
Oh my God, I was
It's like I see three.
So is this similar when we start discussing? Yes.
Oh, we can start with a brief introduction.
So, yes, I am not sure, the last time our pre K fees were raised is probably at least a couple of years. At this point, we are preparing for pre K registration, sending out information to our existing families as well as opening the program to new students. Our preschool program is primarily for special education students, however, we have peer model students that we charge a fee for. Um, the program is self sustaining. So with that being said, um, we are looking to increase our fees. Currently, we have a two day program, a three day program and a five day program, both programs offer a half or a full day. And we also have an extended day program for afternoons only for the special education students who are already attending in the morning free of charge. So we're looking at increasing these rates by two and a half percent with a little bit allowance for rounding, we wanted to make sure they were whole dollars. So we have the rates before you, I wrote up on sheets for our current monthly rate, proposed monthly rate and the increase for each of those categories. As I mentioned, it's roughly a two and a half percent increase and expected to bring in additional revenue next year of approximately eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Sure. Yes. Um, Chris, can I have a ask clarify question?
Sure.
When was the last time our rates were raised? Nobody remembers. Okay, that might be enough of an answer.
The last time we, we didn't raise the rates, but we restructured the opportunities, so the fees went up because of the way that of this we're doing the whole day.
I guess the reason I ask is obviously we, we've seen it in our budget, our budget has increased significantly each year. I guess the reason I ask is obviously we we've seen it on our budget. Our budget has increased significantly each year. And I hate to be the bearer of bad news to pre-K families, but is two and a half percent enough? I think I think it sounds like it has to go up and it should go up in recognition and variety of factors.
That was my question. Have we comped what preschool costs? And that's it's been a while since my kids.
Yeah, so the comps on preschool, Alison listed them yearly, and we are below private, but higher than most public. Redundantly on the higher end. So I think we we go like we go gently with the increases because we don't want to price ourselves out of the public market.
And just if you remind me, not every student is paying, correct? Because it's it's only those who are kind of the partner students.
The peer models.
Peer model, yeah.
So the purpose of the the base need of the program is to offer special education services for pre-K students. So we will need to fund those, an education for those students, whether here or on district. We're funding it here and then trying to supplement and carry the cost by offering seats to peer pals. So we've, since we moved into Memorial School and had the new facility, we've expanded peer pal registration every year and we're up to three classes. So it's a program that's doing well. Um, we have a lot of enrollment. It it does self-sustain at points where it doesn't. It's because the compliance requirement for staffing may push us, but we can also use the IDEA grant to underwrite it. And so it's a really nice program. It's getting kids in earlier. I would love to see us with a much broader pre-K program. Space is a problem at this point. So I think two and a half, I would say two and a half is probably not what we could justify with the market. But if we want to keep growing the program, we even spent some time and then we have lost track of it, trying to figure out how we could use grant funding to create more subsidies for families who need to access the program. They may not qualify for special education services, but they would benefit from early education opportunities. Because the sooner we get students in the system, the sooner we start to acclimate them to school and routines and in their educational process, the the more they're, the better foot they're going to land on when they hit K. So I think our goal is still to continue to look for those opportunities. It's just our attention has been held sort of the past year. So that's a long way of saying we may not make this a huge moneymaker. We're trying to keep pace. I think if we agree to not go here to not without raising it, just raise it to and. That's not, it it's more than fair to the, and actually benefits our program by keeping.
Push back one more. Just, you know. We do want to stay competitive. It doesn't try to go to raise the rates and pressure ourselves out of the market. But you mentioned that it's obviously, I mean, it's it's far below the preschools that I'm aware of, private ones in our community. Of course, we're not looking broader than our community. People are driving to preschool drop off. So when you say it's a little bit high for public, I guess I'm not clear. What public options do residents in Manchester have other than this preschool? Like, when when we worry about losing students, where where might we be losing them to?
To private or, but private would be higher.
So people would not have a chance to jump in.
I I guess. I will, I will take your recommendation, but if we are currently looking at a budget that right now looks like it's growing at a nine percent. Yeah, that's not where we want to land, but it. I would prefer to see. I would prefer to think about. And if you if you tell me you've thought about it and you think we truly will lose families, but it is not unfair to expect that the tuition reflect the costs.
Do you have any observations, Michelle, based on what was being done in your previous district?
I mean, we tried, in my previous district, we tried to keep it very competitive because we did allow out of town families to come to school. So they certainly, you know, certain school systems will allow out of town students to register. I think it becomes more of a financial burden and do I send my child to a two-day program, to a three-day program or a five-day program? Right now, we have a very small waitlist. I would hate to offer the same amount of classrooms and not be able to fill those classrooms. So it is a fine line. We need to dance on that. Um, the program is self-sustaining right now. Um, we're not making extra money by any means, but um, right now it's pretty sustainable. I think we should probably do a deeper dive, maybe in future years, and also make a commitment to come before you every year to adjust these rates in terms of what the program is costing us. What's going on up there? But I think two and a half percent is probably a good start, at least to start that process. But I do think it's something that you should expect to see on an annual basis.
I agree with you.
So do you want us to go back and run for current comps or go with the two and a half for now? It's becoming time sensitive because she needs to put things up, but if we have to wait until January seventh, I guess.
I'd like to take a, uh, on this now to see where we stand.
So I moved, I moved down to accept the proposed rates for the pre-K program.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Given the the time sensitive nature, I'm feeling yes. But I also think that we should be bumping up as much as we safely can. And if you're saying this is as much as we safely can at this point, then let's do it.
And visit it anyway.
Yes.
Do you think price, it's not even a good amount for like seventy dollars. I was going to say, would have, would there be any value of having it in line with the bump up in our Mina contract? So that the teachers. I I don't know, for healthcare. I have to say healthcare wouldn't wouldn't be sustainable, but you know, I guess it makes a good point. If it needs to go on now, but I do think, I think it's really worthwhile to front load a deeper dive into the comps, the comps that are available to residents in this community. Yeah, but I I see your point that it's. Thank you. Um, it could also just be families choosing to do one less day. So it might not be meant to perfectly reflect everything.
It it probably is worth a bigger discussion too about our philosophy around pre-K because I think that's factoring into my recommendation and my lens. It's nice that it does make money and self-sustain itself, but I think it's also something we should be promoting and making accessible. It would serve best people who have the hardest time affording our price raises or even the price where it is now. So hope is to, um, early identify students who might need support, not just their specifically identified special education. Keeping it as affordable as possible is key, and that's been in our mind. We already know that our last look at comps had us way above our neighbors in terms of what they were offering. So it it might just be a good thing to spend some time with, just kind of getting heads around it. And it's, it's in, it's a separate and apart. It's not even in the, it's in the operating budget somewhat, but not really. It's really all revolving funding grant. So it's not even having the impact on the document we're going to be talking about later. So I think it makes sense if you can see your way to approving the two and a half for the time being. That would be appreciated and we are certainly happy to dig in deeper as we go. Something tied to the contract rate.
Should we go?
Michelle, all those in there? Seniors, thank you.
I don't think it's a commitment that we revisit this, but I think it's important and I think it's. And I think it's also important for families to expect us to look at it any. I took a look at them. We were.
I tried to look them up, but it wanted me to like put in my child's information. Contact us. Okay.
Now, do you have a report for this meeting or?
No, really what we've been working on since last Tuesday was, um, new information on the budget, which we wanted to run through with this group first, just so you know what's in your document before we, you'll learn a small presentation and do it publicly. So it could step you through, sent you on. A next. So we went through and took the inputs from last meeting in terms of clarity around some of the items and did a revised budget document, which is in front of you right now. The big highlight, we'll talk, you know, we'll get some public comment on it is, you know, at our last meeting, we were debating a little bit how we should carry the healthcare number in our budget, whether we should assume like a half, a fifty percent reduction. Because it seems like if you go back over the years, we started one number, but related about fifty percent of that by budget time. We were relaying that the information we're getting from USI, who is our broker, was that our months, it's not just market trend, it's also how performing in our good performance months are slipping away and we're adding poor performance months for every, um, for every year we drop off. So after I had sent you some initial notes on Friday, we got a like a four P M email or five P M email with a rate, the latest rate projection, which brought us from twenty-one to twenty-six point nine percent. So it's up two hundred fifty, about two hundred thousand. We're nearing thirty percent. Our, through our process of of bid and negotiation, we can get that down, but from what we know of this, of the data sets that we're adding lots of poor performance every month we go forward. So it's not like we're going to start to bend bend the curve in the opposite direction. So what we did was we went through it. We did, um, input that into the tentative budget packet that we're going to use today, just to reflect where we are in reality. You've heard me say the past, I, from my perspective, I think it's important to, um, to disclose that and to capture that in this budget, knowing that we are going to work it down, not for shock value, but just because we have gone through the experience of it landing in that zone. And not using that number for planning out of the gate. I think I would feel irresponsible. We can certainly model the alternatives and we can subtract five hundred thousand dollars out of the budget and know the better city or go for us. But with that in mind, we've kept it in. Other than that, I think, um, Michelle, you went through and you we narrowed it down to one of the options and we're showing at the carry forward, both the use of three hundred fifty. And this would be page five, three hundred fifty thousand dollars of E and D and one hundred fifty dollar OPEB offset. So through our discussion, we had some different models. It felt like it was a little confusing for people. So we just narrowed it down to strict carry forward. Same number of staff, same basic program, same responsibilities and what their cost is in the coming year based on inflation and rate changes. Other than that.
So Pam, can I just ask clarifications?
Yeah, please.
These new sheets that you sent us, the three pages are in the new packet.
Yep.
The the operating assessment calculation page.
Six. Yep, five and six, five to six.
That now includes the reserves then? Because I just want to remind myself that the last numbers we looked at did not include the reserves in those, right?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's where we were kind of going back and forth and we had three different models and it seemed like we, what we did was came back and said, okay, we carry forward reserves and we carry forward OPEB usage from FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six. Now, the only other item I think, while we redid the, updated the key drivers in the chart of pages one and two, I know I'm bouncing around to reflect what's in the updated budget pages. And the last page in the document, page fourteen, is the reserve snapshot. Making a clear distinction between the reserves and the OPEB trust because they, they don't operate the same and they have different rules and regulations for use. In addition to adding the feasibility study costs, the district feasibility study costs for Essex Elementary. Some five hundred thousand dollar commitment that we added into anticipated uses of a stabilization.
Maybe just take a couple of minutes as we wait for the seven o'clock hearing start, look at it for a few minutes. And if you have any other questions, that way you have, I feel like you have a little bit of a command of it when you start our broader discussion.
We know roughly what the E and D balance was a year ago or a year at the start of the last fiscal year. Like a certified E and D for twenty. Yeah.
Isn't that the one, that the one point four?
No, I mean, the year of four.
Oh, the year.
Because, right, we carried forward that.
It was in that book.
When do we anticipate knowing or when do we usually find out what our E and D number is?
It will be in about a month. Um, it's right in the one point four. It's not much over one. It's right about. I'm estimating, I think, one billion four hundred five thousand. So it's just about one. That's what the auditors as well as myself.
For what you're anticipating for this year's E and D.
For the one that we're.
Yeah, we're going to be.
Yes.
All right, well, with that, I'll take a motion to a re-ending our business meeting.
We don't need to just yet. If we want to work through anymore, then take a peek at what you see. You don't need to end the business meeting. We just need to open the public hearing at seven. Okay, just pardon me. Sorry, I should have.
The new certified E and D for June, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three was one million five hundred thirteen thousand. Four five one three nine nine eight. So the twenty-four number represented here is the ending balance for last fiscal year, which is what we'll trap against. We can become certified by the beginning, by probably January, we'll draw against. Yes.
Say that again, Pam.
So if we walk through page fourteen, the seven one twenty twenty-four balance is the ending balance of E and D for last fiscal year, which is the basis we draw against for twenty-six. Right. We're always playing two years back for the year that we're funding.
Yeah.
So that if we anticipate, we're not going to have a strong surplus at the end of this year to return to E and D. Michelle's projecting that by the end of thirty twenty-five, when we certify for the following year, our balance would be around.
That said, what I'm hearing is the seven twenty-three E and D was one point five million. If we end, or if we get a certified number for seven twenty twenty-four of one point four, we will have seen a decrease of a hundred thousand, even though we committed three hundred fifty, uh, for operating.
Yes. But as we tighten those figures and we are trying to be more and more accurate, it's going to result in less E and D. And because
Yeah.
Just want to check what we used. I don't think it was three fifty the year before. I think it was two hundred. This, this, in this year especially, we used the three fifty, yes. Right? And that's what we're proposing carrying forward, right? But for the year that we went down a hundred and ten thousand dollars, we had only two hundred and some odd thousand dollars committed for E and D. So it's not a, we didn't use one third, we closer to a half of one. I'll go back and check, you know.
I'm I'm off on my times now. I'm not sure I follow.
Yeah, because the three fifty came out of last year's E and D for this current year.
Right.
Yeah, came out of twenty threes for this year. And then we were. Twenty threes for this year, and then we were. Were anticipating or punishing it because of our investment earnings, much higher than anticipated. Much higher than the question. So in the two, in the twenty twenty four budget. The twenty four budget at E and D usage of. It was a less than, it was less than three hundred thousand. And I only raised that not to be.
So, but shouldn't we then have a F Y twenty five, three hundred fifty on this table somewhere then? If we're two years off?
No, it's a year off technically. So the number we're about to have certified was for F Y.
Twenty five.
Twenty four, but used in twenty five for the twenty six budget.
Which would reflect the three hundred fifty we obligated last.
That's, that came out of last year's for this year. I think that's what we're, that's the budget we're writing now. We won't know, so we don't have a certified E and D that will be certified till next year.
Right, but then there should be two three hundred fifty thousand dollar obligations on this chart.
The one we used for this current budget was obligated last year.
Okay.
As of June thirty, disappears. There's, we're always trying to figure out like how. And this is where I think we were told last year how stupid. Right, we're trying to figure out how much of that E and D do we add if there are being nothing. No, actually, we can give it here. So if we put in two hundred, do we use the whole two hundred or we use just a hundred? But I think you are the one who walked us through it through it last year that there's a, you, you can't. You can't really project in that way because of what makes up E and D is simply. An earmark number from that account we can give it here, it's bush and full of all of, all of revenues. Yeah, which it changes at the beginning, so a little bit more.
That makes sense to me that you can't say whether or not you use the two that are in, but I, I think the broader point that we're just trying to make, which I do understand is like when you look at. This is kind of the, the thing that we've been grappling with, right? If your E and D budget stays somewhat steady despite using it. It gives you a little bit more comfort using it. I, but I also hear you that as, as you come in and tighten up a little bit of how we've been budgeting, that we may not see. And E and D. Continue, continue to grow. But, but I think, I think that was, Jake, I don't know if you're ever listening, but I think that was a point that was kind of making.
Yes, yeah.
I do not, I, I am not anticipating a punishment. Very much this year. I do not think next year it will be at the one point four, one point five by any means.
Any other little, little question? Yeah, or I think we talked about it, but can you invite?
Did you speak up?
Sorry. Line items for instructional courses that we approved last year, do they remain in the budget? Do they reflect in the staff?
Would you take a recess? Yep, two minutes. Nevermind. What do you mean? It's just, it's just awkward sitting here with the mic and the camera on. I'm going to refill my water though, and you're not going to have a pour in back and probably fill in my water, but it's sorry. When you come back, I think we should be late on time to go. Like flop. Are we anticipating that as of? Theresa's back from the start, or we're going to start without her? I'm going to let sleep my children's Halloween candy, feel free. Don't tell them. Right, Chris, when you're ready, I think we should call the public hearing. Order.
All right, I'd like to call to order the public hearing of the Manchester Essex. Speaker committee to review the F Y twenty six tentative budget. At seven oh one P M on Wednesday, December fifteenth.
So the order of operations is usually will give you reintroduction. And then the remainder of the meeting is taking public comment on. What we should be bearing in mind as we set out on our next steps for budget development. Is that?
It's perfect. As far as comment goes, when it comes to the online first to start and then in person or the other way around?
Either the other, I mean, that's up for the committee to decide. I would go either other way around or toggle back and forth that way there. Folks at home can stay interactive, not.
Perfect.
Give up and leave. Okay, so. Welcome, a lot of familiar faces. We've got some kids in the back, is this specific action project? Welcome. I'm going to go quickly through the overview, we'll do it in two quick pieces, I'm going to give you the, the headlines and Michelle's going to walk you through a couple of the. Technicals on some of the key drivers. I know many of you were on the call last week. And if you came in at the tail end of the business meeting, you heard us talking a little bit about some changes that occurred just Friday night to Monday. In terms of some of our assumptions, so. Basically, I always like to start the tentative budget hearing by reminding everybody what the tentative budget really is and what it isn't. So what it isn't, it isn't a budget recommendation, what it is, is a progress report on our budget development. It's based mostly on projected assumptions, we don't have many concrete numbers at this point. But it's here to give everyone visibility into what we know. At this point in time and how some of the key drivers may impact. Our challenges and opportunities going into the, into next year. We foresee the, the adopted, the recommended budget coming out on January twenty first. I know I talked to a couple of people. At our last meeting, the school committee amended our typical budget timeline to sync up a little bit better now that we've, we've got the Manchester. Town meeting moved out almost a month, so we'll be looking to do the budget adoption on March fourth with the. Hearing, the second hearing on February fourth with our recommended budget coming out a couple of weeks before on the twenty first. So it actually might play out nicely and allow us to go through the process. And not end before we have a lot of our real numbers. Because we'll talk healthcare tonight and our healthcare number usually settles sometime in February. We were a little lucky last year that we were able to lock something down by, I think, July, January thirty first. We may not be as lucky this year. So this is a preliminary budget, which is projecting what we think, what we're hoping is the worst case scenario at this point. And historically, we have used this as the high watermark, so the understanding that this is. The worst case scenario and, and likely any changes coming forward will be hopefully reductions to the bottom line. So what we know at this point, and this is a little small for you to see, sorry about that, is that. The preliminary budget, the tentative budget is built as a carry forward, everybody's favorite carry forward level service is the phrase. Someday will land on a common understanding, but basically from our perspective. It takes everything we own this year and it moves it forward and the budget really accounts for a change in, in rates, so what it costs to him.
Can you increase this so that we can see, try and see some of it?
It's not, it's not.
That's why I'm asking. Thanks, that's perfect, that better? Just, I'll try to scroll. So basically it's carry forward, we're taking everything we have this year and moving it forward. Inclusive of the amount of reserves. So when we look at the revenue page, we've kept reserve usage the same for next year. At three fifty for E and D and a hundred and fifty OPEB offset. So we're still carrying five hundred thousand dollars in alternative revenues. And we're carrying everything else in the budget. It doesn't contain any expanded effort, so every year, whether we're able to accomplish it or not. Principals and directors submit with their budget proposals their, their asks or recommendations for staffing or capital needs. Capital needs, our budget, like, like your budgets, our budgets are very. They're fairly tight on the expense lines, we don't usually grow them. We never grow them more than two and a half, often they're level funded or grow at the one percent rate. So if they need something for the schools, like a set of desks or share replenishment. They can't, there's really not a place for it in their expense budget, so that gets put on our small cap list, if it exceeds twenty thousand. We move it to our larger capitalist, which we would then look at stabilization to fund. Long story short, all of those requests are captured in this budget document as requests, but they aren't factored into the carry forward budget. Carry forward budget isn't adding heads, it isn't adding new money to the budget for any projects, it's just taking what we have this year. Assuming that it can be reorganized and it might look differently, but the same, the same number of, basic number of heads in the same program that we have. So the numbers that we're going to talk about tonight is really just kind of keeping things in a steady state. And at this point that we're not making any cuts. So two big snapshots, the carry forward level services budget. Is the bottom number, is coming in at nine percent over next year with the key driver being healthcare, which we'll talk a little bit about in a minute. If we were to include the expanded effort, so that's the staffing request, it's about four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars more, that would put us in the ten point three percent range. We'll circle back to this later on, we know that those numbers are way out of anyone's. About what possibly could happen for next year, so we're trying to run a little, a table that essentially shows. Where the, where the numbers are at the moment. But what they look like in compared to some of our typical scenarios. So we, we always talk about this three point five percent kind of being our standard. Steady, steady state deliverable, so if we are to pick that line, we are one point six million or one point seven million. Over budget to where our normal portrait is. So that presents a challenge for us this year, how are we going to work that number down? Can we work that number down? Healthcare is what is driving it primarily and Michelle will speak to that. So this is just a quick snapshot of where we are, this is just a little, what our next steps are in terms of public input. So with that being said, the headline is healthcare is our challenge this year, I'm going to kick it over to Michelle, she's going to walk you through this document. So you don't need to look at the screen, you can look right at the sheets in front of you. If you open it up, you're going to see on the first. Inside the first page are the key drivers and where they landed for this year and the graphic representation of it. And Michelle's going to talk to you a little bit about the healthcare number. That one, would you like that? I'll sound like, thank you. So yes, referring to F Y twenty six tentative budget revised December ninth, twenty twenty four. This is also, I believe it's already posted online as of. Yep, anybody at home who can't get the. Obviously can't pick up a handout, you can go to the finance page on the website and both the slide deck and the budget are posted there. Yes. So right inside the front cover on page one, we have the key drivers. And as you'll notice, about halfway down, we have the categories broken down by expenditure. Personnel, our personnel portion of the budget is roughly sixty percent, it's fifty nine point ninety two percent of our budget. So when we're talking, you know, what's driving our cost, the increase in that particular overall cost is five point two four percent. Which is followed all the way to the right. Operating expenses are the second half of that page and our largest, our large portion of that budget is health insurance benefits and other insurances. And overall, those make up twenty one percent. And as we've been talking, primarily that increase, which in that category is overall is twenty five percent all the way to the right. We're looking at a one point three million dollar increase, which primarily is made up of the health insurance rates that we're talking. Initially, we were given advice from our insurance broker. That we were looking at most likely a twenty one percent increase as of late Friday, we received an updated projection that we're looking at a twenty six point nine percent increase now. So it certainly is not going in the direction we had hoped, we won't have actual renewal rates probably until sometime in late January, February. This does not mean that we're just hoping for great rates, we're actually trying to take some action, we're trying to look at other options. Other carriers and how to best get these rates done. But back to the page one, as you see the, the rest of the categories, we have out of district tuitions, operations, facilities, technology, software, other expenditures. Those are all categories that are less than ten percent of our budget. So really when we're talking our budget drivers, we're looking at personnel and we're looking at health insurance. And as superintendent. Mentioned, we're not looking at adding any new heads to our staffing at this time. While we do have a listing of the expanded effort in our budget, but none of those figures are calculated into these figures here. Onto page two, really just has a graphic chart of how our budget. Is broken down, the big budget drivers, administration, you know, looking at an increase of one point eight percent. Instructional costs are going up, which is primarily our staffing of six point five percent. Student activities, which is the transportation, athletic and activities is, is just over five percent. Operations and maintenance is less than two percent, our insurance and benefits is looking at an overall increase of twenty four percent. And some of these numbers are fluctuating, when you look at one particular segment, it might be twenty five percent, or if you look at the actual. Health insurance increase, it's almost twenty seven percent, but there's a lot of different insurance pieces and benefit pieces that come together. Looking at the overall insurance and benefits in that category. And then lastly, last programs and with other districts, which is our special education. We're looking at only a one percent increase in that category this year for a total increase of nine percent of our budget. And as we understand, the nine percent is not typical nor sustainable, and that is what we're, we're looking at for our carry forward or operating costs. As we are doing business today in next year's terms. So onto page three, which is our budget summary, this just breaks it down by. The DESI code and we break it down into various. Subcategories, the first half of the page is personnel, which is over, overall of five point two before, five point.
subcategories. The first half of the page is personnel, which is over, overall a 5.24, 5.24% increase. And then all other expense categories, which is a 15.1% increase. And that big driver is the health insurance there. For a total overall increase of that 9%. I do want to mention that at the very, very bottom of the sheet, we are anticipating increasing our school choice funds offset by 100,000. This means we are going to expand our school choice program to invite an additional 20 students into that program, which would result in about another $100,000 in revenue. So that's coming right off, right off the top in terms of what we'd be assessing to the member communities. Page four, we just summarize our general fund revenue. The first part of the chart is without reserves. If we were not to use any reserves this current year, this was the initial budget presentation that was actually given at the last school committee meeting. We had done the entire budget without using reserves. And then we came to the realization, if we're looking at a 9% increase, we had probably had better factor in at least a level of use of same level of reserves that we used last year, which was 350,000 from our excess and deficiency fund and 150,000 in our OPEP contribution. So the bottom chart shows you what our revenues are using those same exact figures in terms of next year's funding costs. As I do mention, the school choice offset is increasing $100,000. With that increase, our revenues are still only going up 19%. The increase is being passed on to the towns. Page five just breaks down what the assessment would look like for both towns. It carries forward the total budget breakdown. Our funding formula breaks down into what's considered an instructional cost versus a non-instructional cost. We break those down. There are various factors that go into the assessment, which are actually on page six, that's the formula. But page five is the actual breakdown. A 9% budget increase is actually stemming a 9.7% overall assessment increase to the member towns. And that's at the bottom of page five. You see the increase to both Manchester and Essex, and these are preliminary based on an EQB figure that has not yet been updated. Those figures will be updated in January when they, the new EQB figures are released. So they are estimates. They mentioned page six is just that portion of the formula. Page seven is the expanded effort stat list, which was put together as how would we expand our programs? Where could we expand our programs? What would be really great to have at this point? And sometimes it's even what, what is really needed. But these figures are not added into any of the operating budget costs at this time. So the best way we can probably figure out how to incorporate some of these absolute needs would be to find other funding sources within or existing funding sources within our budget. And as superintendent mentioned, these total 425,000. Page eight is our capital plan. As we mentioned, some of it's small cap. Some of it is, the rest of it would go for a large cap, which is funded by our stabilization funds. We are looking at pretty, pretty happy lift in the coming year or two of 698,000 from the stabilization fund. Not saying that all these, these products are necessarily going to go forward in the next year or so. But we do have substantial needs that it is important that the committee as well as the public are aware. Page nine just lists our staffing. And this compares last year's staffing or two years ago staffing to our current staffing. Last year's budget did agree to instructional coaches as well as some additional higher professionals. So those are reflected in these actual figures. They weren't included in the 212 figure. When that budget was presented, they were add-ons when the budget was actually reduced. The total current staffing count is 217 heads or FTEs. And then on page 10, provided a budget crosswalk in terms of staffing. What is in our operating budget, which is 197.85 employees grant funded and other revolving funded is 19.4 for that total of the 217. And you will see what categories those are broken down into. And then a lot of this is just informational purposes. On page 11 is our enrollment as a Rock Global One, as we submitted to the state. Page 12 is our enrollment history. Breaks it down by grade, by year. Page 13 is our capital or debt budget. It really is not included in the operating assessment, but is a separate assessment for proved capital debt costs. And then the last page, page 14, just gives an overview of our reserves and our OPEP trust. Oh my, for our time, we, we spent a little bit of time, the committee talking about we're anticipating our A and D to come in right around 1.4 million this year. Anticipating using at least the 350,000 to consider level, level funding of where we were for the current year. In addition, stabilization fund, we currently have 1.5 million. And we have commitments of 500,000 towards our Essex element feasibility study. And then we have other capital plan items of 84,000 this year and possible 780,000. We will get some investment earnings on that, but we do not have any necessary revenue stream refunding that lot of money. So as we use it, it's not an infinite lot of money by any means. And then the bottom half of that page is just our OPEP trust. Currently have 5.8 million. Looking at investment earnings for this year, our contribution for the META meter agreement. And then that is pretty much all the activity that happens from year to year. So really the, the far right column is two years out. Where do we think it's going to be at the end of FY26? Probably 8.8 million, but that is yet to be seen. And that is really all of the interworkings of the FY26 budget where we're, we're looking. This is hopefully our high water mark at this point. We certainly do not expect to be able to move forward with the budget of this magnitude, but this is really our starting point and we need to get some direction in terms of where we need to go. We will see some, some more firm numbers coming in. But this is our starting. So with that, I think we're ready for questions unless there's any further questions from the door.
I've seen any, I think we're good to go. So I'll start by recognizing anyone in the audience here today. And why don't you go first?
How do you estimate your out of district in terms of our tuitions? For out of district special education placements? Yep, we take all of our known placements. We add a percentage in terms of what the state or OSD, Operational Services Division is estimating for the increase for next year, which I believe is 3.7% increase in tuitions. Some of our programs we do know are going up higher than that. They can petition state and the state can approve. So we do know a couple of our programs are going to higher than that 3.7%. And we roll those forward. We know a couple of students are anticipated to leave the programs, whether they're aging out or moving or whatnot. We take that into consideration and then we move that forward. So right now we are anticipating no increase in terms of tuition costs. We do have a slight increase of 17,000 in terms of our summer school program. And so we're moving forward with that at this time. Can I have to follow on? You have, do you have any buffer for movement? We do not carry a buffer per se. We have some students that are identified that are potential placements. And we do have those considered into that figure at this time. We don't have a buffer for unknown students. And really that's what, we tried to carry over a full year of circuit breaker revenue. And that really is our insurance policy in terms of being able to afford that with a last minute decision or a last minute cost.
We've often relied on the knowledge that we have, school choice reserves as a backstop for any real catastrophic enrollment. There's something there, but not what it is.
Can we just be sure to speak up? I know it's hard to hear in fact. Next was, good?
My point, okay, just sit down.
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Sally Unas of the Benessigs. Oh, my address, 20 Harlow Street, sorry. As we embark on a new budget season adventure, I'm wondering if we can have a narrative where we can keep discussions of comparisons and rankings to a minimum. Comparisons do nothing to help solve a problem, but they create feelings of FOMO and feelings of grievance. Rankings can be fine as a general assessment, but recognize that most of the time rankings are only quantitative. For example, Boston Magazine has us ranked at number three. However, US News and World Reports ranks us as number 17. These numbers are not helpful. I'd also like to see much less blaming and shaming towards one town or another. The budget is a district issue, not a singular town problem. Disregarding town members affordability is not a student centered approach. A budget is a puzzle that includes affordability as well as best practices and collaboration. I encourage you to take the qualities we've outlined as our vision of the graduate and practice them. Last year, I suggested we take a per pupil expenditure for various course offerings. Calculate per course spending using actual teacher and aid salaries, course schedules and course enrollment numbers. You then have a fair per pupil course expenditure that allows you to compare four classes versus electives, GP versus AP and even grade to grade. I'd like to understand why this has not been considered. A prop two and a half override will not solve any problems, only short term relief. It is time to look at the structure of our program, which not only includes consideration of the breadth of what we offer, but how it is offered. For example, if the student wants to pursue history, but when they make their schedule, they are unable to also take band because of a scheduling conflict. That's not really a breadth of offerings. And referring to the schedule change we discussed last year, and I think it's worth a second look. And finally, last year, this will be many voted to budget in two, to budget in two library TAs amounting to amounting to $66,000 above PAM's recommended 2.77% budget. We am cautioned you in approving the slightly higher budget because of the amount to a potentially bigger funding clip for this year. So my question here is what has this whole committee done differently in the last few months to reframe either how you think about the budget or how the budget is structured to allow for the additional staff? Thank you.
Next, I think I saw Gary.
Yeah, I just had some questions. Gary, David, Ben, Ben Butrick, 81B, Chute Street in Essex. I immediately look at what's controllable and what's uncontrollable in terms of this. And I get the whole insurance thing. I mean, it is what it is, right? So what I was, what I was curious about is the teaching assistants, which show an increase in headcount in the TAs. I was just wondering what the thinking is behind that, because that, that ties to 32.8% increase, just in terms of the cost of that. Number one. And then secondly, this is actually just a yes or no question. On the general classroom teachers, which is a 6.8% increase, yet the FTE is flat. I'm assuming that's collectively bargained based on where we're at in the contract cycle with the teachers. So that, that is 100% collectively bargained? Or is there something behind that in terms of the mix of teachers on the grid? On the staff?
Can we just clarify? I think that 6.3 number is the overall for all of our staff, the team.
This is 2305 on page three, line item 2305, teacher 6.8.
The second question first, so you're looking at 2305, that's teachers. So unless they're designated a special ed or library teacher or guidance counselor psychologist underneath, all those, they are all also part of the lab bargaining agreement. They're just categorized differently for DESI. That is all general specialist classroom content teachers. It is a function of rate column, step and cola combined for this year.
Okay, the, the 6.8% just seemed high, given that the FTE didn't change. But it only changed by 0.65. So we don't need to like spend a lot of time on that. And then just the teaching assistants, just how those are deployed. Be helpful.
Yep. So Michelle highlighted a couple of the specific ads that we did last year and we brought on two library TAs. And we also, the reminder of our TAs are primarily special education TAs. So they're, they're assigned by me and through the IEP process. So if a student arrives, then we're going through that now this year, this year. If a student is coming back into the program and they are moving in and have an IEP that requires a TA, you have to provide the TA. They are evolving in their disability and becoming need more assistance to navigate the day. And the, the team determines that they need a one-on-one, we need to add the TA. So TAs, if you look at staffing breakdown, you'll see overwhelmingly that the teaching assistants are special education. So the majority of them are clearly by student need.
So that would be in the uncontrollable category, because?
Generally are controls, you know, I guess I would think we made the case to why we wanted to add back, add in the TAs to the library last year, but that is discretionary. TAs for special education typically are more compliance or safety.
And just to add, in terms of the 32% cost increase of that line, part of that was contract negotiations. So that united the theme. I'm sort of looking for you, 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 you and I. And we had actually carried the amount for negotiations under the negotiations longevity expanded effort line in the FY25 budget, the current year budget. So we settled that contract of a year and a half worth of the contract negotiations has now been moved into that, that line. So that's why you're seeing such a large increase in that one.
So the million eight is actually the first year of that contract ticking in versus last year?
Correct. Yes.
And about 150 is additional heads.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
And also I just want to elaborate in terms of the teacher increase. You will notice where you had the 6.8% increase. You also have a 0.9% increase last year. I mean, difference from last year on the special education teachers. And I am actually thinking where it didn't change heads. I'm thinking it was a different categorization between the previous director of finance and myself. So because overall, if we look at page one, the actual teacher increase, if you look at the first line under personnel salaries, teacher, the cost for actual teachers and the teachers union is going up 5.9, 5.09%. So I think that's just a reclassification of these costs.
The lead is the public comment online. So for those joining us online, if you do have any comments to make, please do so in the chat. Or we just need to have people in the chat. I guess it's simply listing name and address. And it doesn't look like we have any.
Is the chat open? I reopened it when we started.
So if you are, you would like to make, okay.
I'm sorry, I have any camera who needs to have her full address?
So Amy, if you could just add your full address in the chat and then you can go ahead.
Sure. Oh God, how do I do that?
You just say it.
I guess I have a couple of questions about page 14, which is the E and D number. And I'm wondering how much we've spent, actually spent of that. Possible, you know, I don't think we don't know this year. You've budgeted three fifty, but. How much did we actually spend this year compared to last year? And then I would, just a quick note, and you don't have to necessarily answer this, but what is the cost of a loaded salary? For, you know, a teacher's salary.
Teacher. What do you mean by loaded, Annie?
So insurance and all that stuff, is it, it used to be seventy. But that was a long time ago.
With the mess, I mean. We've got the average. Let me think about it for a second.
Okay, you don't have to need to answer tonight, just.
No. No, but I just don't. I have two different numbers in my head, and I don't know why they're both there. One might be old and one might be new, or it might have been a mistake. So I'm gonna hold my comment until we we clarify. Um, on the E and D, I think we had a little bit of a conversation about this before. Um, it looks like when we do a look back to twenty twenty three, we. We return to E and D the following year about half of what we had booked into the budget. So what we struggle with is that the E and D number, I think what everybody's trying to do, and rightfully so, is to track how quickly. How quickly will that number get spent down if we increase our usage? What we don't know or what all the pushes and pulls are in a given year that are going to dictate the end of year number. In terms of returning money to the E and D account. So it's not like a special earmark where we don't touch the money unless we need it, it just flows in. And at the end of the year, we have additional interest income or additional expenditure. It isn't necessarily that money that flows right back out to E and D. That being said, it looked like we used about half of what we had budgeted prior to twenty twenty four. And I think Michelle has been cautioning that we're budgeting tighter every year in our end of year. In the black is small every year. And this year, our healthcare number, of course, is carrying the twenty six point nine percent projected income base. It's also carrying. Um, a sixty thousand dollar adjustment because we underb, we were under budget for actives in this count for in this academic year. So we budgeted too tight on healthcare last year, which has been a conversation. So I I think that there. There's a little nervousness about projecting to punch. Shell, please come in if you have a different.
Yeah, no, so. Out of this year's current E and D or the current. Amount that we had to spend or will have to spend, we're spending. Actually, I should go back. The amount we spent from last year was three hundred and fifty thousand for this year's budget. And the year before, I believe we spent two hundred and thirty seven thousand for last year's budget. Um, currently, we're anticipating of the one point four million that we're anticipating having certified, we will be. At least spending three hundred and fifty thousand towards next year's budget. But I am not too confident that we are going to regenerate that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
She said, she had it in the chat, she said, one, follow up remark. Yeah.
Just someone made a remark. That a prop two and a half wouldn't make a difference, and yes, it would, it would make a very big difference. Um, so that is, don't li, don't believe it.
Good, uh, go ahead.
Jody Harris, twenty one on Spring Street in Essex. I just want to talk a little bit about the the um estimated certified E and D of one point four million dollars. Four million. Three hundred and fifty thousand was committed to the budget last year. Of the one point four, how much is attributed to um? You know, interest income that you didn't expect a revenue stream versus you're um not expending that amount of money.
Um, I don't have those figures right in front of me right now. I believe it was about three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, and then um also, have we, I I haven't seen it, have we received the um year end numbers, budget to actual for FY twenty four?
The end of year report? The, it's by line item.
The submitted, yeah, the submitted report is done. Did I post it? It's done, it should be posted. If it's not, we'll go back and double check.
Okay, great. Um, and then my other comment is about um carrying the number for healthcare, we all, I think we're in the same book. Um, so we're getting large numbers coming in, large estimates. But my my hope, um, I think we talked about this in the joint um finance committee meetings, our hope is that if there's a. Five hundred thousand dollar difference in the estimated caring of healthcare numbers, and it goes down, that that five hundred thousand comes straight off the. The the total budget, so that we can have a one to one. Um, knowing that that healthcare number changed, I think last year, uh, there was some, I think the. Two TAs for the library and something else, I think, were reallocated of that money, but I think. From from a town's perspective, I think we we would wish that it were clean, was a clean number. Um, so dollar for dollar, it it the budget reduces by the reduction of the healthcare. And then I'm just, I was curious, but I think you already answered my question. You said you added three TAs that were. Added after the budget was approved. And you're carrying.
No, there were two, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. You you added the two TAs within the budget. And then there were three more in the headcount, and so I maybe I misunderstood the the three TAs that. It sounded like we're not in the budget, I think it was, it's this conversation started at the last meeting, so. They knit it together for me, Pam.
Yeah, so there's a sheet, and I'm happy to recirculate it that existed in the budget last year that showed for every position. What was we organized or reallocated to get there? Um, and the two library TAs.
Part of it all the way through. I need to go back to refresh my.
It's like sixty six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's around sixty six, seventy thousand dollars.
There's a whole chart, so I think we're probably best served to go back and pull the chart, so I don't. Don't free form on it in this space.
Well, I guess my question is, we. Like catch up with three TAs, let's just say they made fifteen thousand a year, so one hundred and fifty thousand, if it was not budgeted, would mean three hundred thousand in this year.
No, it was, the new heads were budgeted, they were accounted for with a different offset. But the new contract. Yeah, the the big jump is through the contract.
Yeah.
All right, I did it.
Me and McKinnon, one on that road in Essex. So I actually threw a question, seeing the increase in school choice. Um, I do think school choice has many benefits, but that is a separate conversation, we're talking about the budget. At this time, if school choice goes up to six hundred thousand, that would mean approximately a hundred and twenty students. Which means we're getting to an enrollment of ten point eight percent for school choice students representing our school. So my question to the school committee would be. Are you just gonna now keep committing to increasing school choice as a funding mechanism? Are you thinking of ever creating a limit of policy as to what percent of enrollment can be based by non resident students? What percent of enrollment or class can be based by non resident students? Looking at page twelve, or excuse me, sorry, page eleven, you really do see that the middle schools have a significant amount, six, seven, eighth grade, I never picked it. And ninth grade of school choice students. And then if you do look at page twelve, you still see a decline in enrollment. So it's just sort of that piece of, are we using school choice kids to create money for a budget? We have heard repeatedly that there is a structural issue to our budget. We are a top five school, but our enrollment keeps dropping. So we always go back to why, is this, what is the school committee doing to try to understand why it's happening? Enrollment is dropping across the state. If enrollment is not dropping at the level of that it is dropping at our district. If switch has dropped nineteen percent, Manchester Six has dropped twenty two percent, the state drop has not been double digit. Enrollment has dropped, happy to send a report out altogether, but it's not dropping at the level we've been dropping year to year.
Yep.
And it's just very. To serve again the idea that. School choice has benefits. The whole mantra of school choices, we have seats to fill. If I recall, a year ago, Pam had said, it's not a one for one. If I remember, it's maybe if we have a hundred thousand in school choice, we actually get maybe sixty seven thousand, I remember, like maybe a two third, one third for how it offsets, like it's not a one for one that we get a clean. Amount to us. And at a certain point. Are, is the school committee going to tell the two towns that you're comfortable with the two towns taking out these expenses? When ten percent or higher of our school enrollment doesn't even come to our town.
So, you know, your numbers are a little bit off. Um, we currently have seventy six school choice students, maybe we have twenty about ninety six this year, but we're also graduating, so.
So I'm going up five hundred thousand and a five thousand dollar cost that we get from state five divided by.
Right, so we discussed this at our last meeting, I'll let Pam go over that, but it's not a flat rate.
But fair enough, but it's going up, our town enrollment's going down, I can look at, so I will take it that I'm off by a percentage, so is the school committee going to create a. Look into a policy that at a certain point, you would have a threshold. That you would not want to see the class makeup or the total enrollment makeup become, let's say, ten percent.
I think when we start to add teachers is what we've discussed here, but no, we don't have a policy that exists.
This, it is something belving in our um modesty, that's. From when I was on the school committee, it was something that was voted on by school committee in March, whether or not we were gonna take in.
Right, so we do that, we do that every year.
So it is part of, I'm I'm not so sure it's a policy, but it is every March is when we would. Make that decision. So that from history.
Oh, no, I know, it's just sort of at some point getting to it and the seats being filled.
I think the easy answer is yes.
The answer is we'll just keep increasing the.
No, the answer is yes, that we look at it every year, and uh. If you'd like an example, I can give you an example at the middle school level. Uh. You know, you need a certain amount of teacher student, you have to, you have your core requirements. And if there are empty seats in that classroom. You know, there's no cost savings, right? We can't uh get rid of math in sixth grade, right? So um, we look at that historically as we, whenever we look at school choice. We look at the capacity the program has, how it will affect it, not just that year, but also in future years. And we take all that into account. Uh, and with the goal being that. That protects us from having to incur additional costs. And they're just our systemically areas that uh, you know. Especially in middle school, but we can't go below. A certain number of teachers, right? Um, at the elementary level, we're already at, you know. Large sections, so, you know, for instance, we're not going to be taking additional students. When we have a class already of, you know, twenty three or twenty four students in the class, right? So we we take all that into account each year when we look if we're going to add, potentially add school choice or not. So every year we we analyze it and.
And I could appreciate it, and I do appreciate it, it's when you look at page twelve. To see that in the middle school, six, seven, eight, twelve, ten, and eleven, which are students. When you look at the enrollment decline for six, seventh, and eighth, you have six, twelve, fourteen students leaving. So it's not to have us just be back and forth, it's at some point, and your colleague Jake has asked, he gets shut down regularly. At some point, will the program be evaluated? So that the middle school, the high school is looked at, so we understand that the program, because there is a concerning issue. That enrollment is dropping, and we're just filling it in with school choice students.
I think that we'd also like to make our communities welcoming to families. I think that this is a community issue, right? It's a demographic issue. We don't think it's that the overall. Enrollment, the percent of students who are enrolled in our public schools versus in private schools, has had some massive explosion. Right? The demographics are changing in our communities, and I think that that's a community question. Why are the demographics changing? Why might families not want to live here? Why might families with young children not move here? Why are fewer children enrolling in kindergarten? I think those are big, big community questions that um go beyond. Just a school district, beyond the purview of the school district, these are also. Community issues, right? The housing, all of this.
Or, and and it's just that they share expenses by both towns, and we seem to want to keep just doing businesses.
All I can share, um, you you've picked up on the fact that we are, if we were to add the twenty students, we would be under a hundred. We get a minimum rate of five thousand dollars for every student in. And then up. Did it increase rate if the student once in requires additional services? We account for the services and submit billing. To DSS, and it all flows through chapter seven. Page twelve, I think, is an interesting page to look at. I think these are all interesting questions that the committee can consider, we're happy to help you piece through that. But when I look at the chart on. On page twelve. I look at the early years of the district and see is actually replicating a situation that you had when you started out as a district. Um, you had similar, not identical, resident enrollment, but you were bringing in. Over a hundred students at a maximum close to one fifty. Um, for some significant additional revenue. I'm not recommending that we go back there, but it is a place where this district has lived before. Um, so I think it's a good conversation to have. We're not proposing escalating those numbers. We're not even proposing, we know where the twenty students would get sent at this point. Last year, we talked about a multi step to try to get to a cap of a hundred. This will be our effort to do so. So I just leave you with those couple of points, but I do think this chart is interesting in that manner, and. I'll just add that this chart only shows kids who aren't here in district, it is not accounting for on district enrollment, so we do have additional students not represented. In this chart.
Does anyone online have any additional comments? If so, please put those in or put your name to the chat so we can. Know that you'd like to make a comment. Any additional questions or comments? Personally, uh, go ahead.
Um, this is kind of a technical question, um. I believe that when you're allocating money from E and D. That has to be in your budget. How can you spend money from your stabilization cap? Can you, does that have to go through the budget? Or can the school committee handle it itself?
Committee can appropriate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nate, why don't you go ahead? Not sure if we can hear you, though. Uh, Nate, you were next online. Having technical difficulties.
I said unmute.
Yeah, I mean.
Since he can't unmute, one says request sign for him to unmute. There's a question in the chat. Yeah, that's good.
Sure, it's a question.
He just said, he just. He said, I can go by question.
Okay. Sarah, why don't you go ahead next, and uh, we'll see if we can get you. Go ahead, Sarah.
Are they having trouble?
I see Sarah's unmuted.
Sarah is unmuted.
But we just can't hear. But she shows us unmuted on my screen. Sorry, hold on, we're working on it. Sorry, hold on, we're working on it.
I don't think we can fix it. Well, Andy came through this. Oh, that's true. See?
Let's try that. Sarah, can you, can we hear you now?
We go, it's interested to hear dialogue from the school committee about how we continue to expand programs that are currently. Just to see, did I scroll past something?
Nate, he just posted something in the chat.
So we have something to.
So I can read that then.
That'd be great.
All right. So Nate Berkowitz, uh, is interested to hear dialogue from the school committee about how we continue to expand programs that are currently. Under-supported like music, arts and debate.
I think he just wants to hear our thoughts on it, I think.
No, but is he asking, is there a way we can do that or is he saying, why aren't we?
How we continue to have been here.
I think Nate understands that it is important to us to support these programs and that we do try to support those programs. As we potentially, you know, as part of our strategic vision. But, uh. Maybe how we support those in this budget year.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
I believe one way, um, that that is happening though is by incorporating those schools. So with the theater program, uh, combining middle high school for the musical, um, made a big difference because there were, there was a greater participation and therefore. Greater turnout shows all, everything just magnifies in that way. And when we're getting kind of two schools for the price of one in terms of a program that's being offered, that's one way. And I believe debate started, um, inviting perhaps eighth graders to participate. Is that right then? So starting again to bridge that a little bit to expand our user base, that's one that we can in a, a, a budget friendly way. Continue to support those programs that are not, I don't know if undersupervised is, is the word I would use, but, um. Underutilized in some ways, and I know there's been a lot of passionate people trying really hard to move that forward in a difficult budget.
And, uh. Heather Leonard was in last month presenting about the grant that she had to, uh. Look into our performing arts. Was it just the arts council? Yeah, the arts, um, curriculum review in our district curriculum. Arts council review. Uh, but there were some really promising opportunities that were highlighted from that sort of deep dive into what the arts look like in our schools. Including lots of opportunities for, um, core classroom teachers to start integrating those elements more. And, uh, using them more mindfully and more intentionally. So I, I'm hoping that that will at least pique more students' interests and, um. Expose more students to those valuable parts of their education. There's another comment in there. I think that's Sarah.
Yeah. Um, so next, Sarah had a comment that I can read out loud. The care and education of our children is one of the most crucial responsibilities of our communities. I hope that we all bear this in mind as we move forward with these difficult conversations. I trust our school committee and administration to make reasonable recommendations. Our district has done a good job keeping costs as low as possible, and I trust that they will continue to do so. While serving our children with professionalism and care and providing them with the best possible program to meet the needs of all students. Thank you for your comment, Sarah. I'm not sure if we can continue to try to. Work on the online, but, uh. All right, great. Why don't you go ahead and then, Nina, next, okay?
Great. Rejecting some scenarios, and if Sharon stays at twenty-six and comes down to twenty, if it comes down to fifteen. Have you read those numbers or is it premature?
Got a chart for you, Greg. It was anticipating that might come up and did a little see. If I can find it really quick, that's going to be a trip, right?
Were you looking for that today? Are the plan design set in contract?
Yes.
So any, any changes happen?
Great, can you say that again? The planned design?
The health insurance plan.
Oh, the health insurance, okay.
Are you looking to display the chart?
No. This is just a rough look. Uh, I don't know how well you can see it. So. Basically, on the top line, you have the current budget and how far we're over two and a half percent. It, it just kind of runs the gap for a two point five, three point five, four point five scenario. I do have some other charts that will start to show. I didn't put it in here, but sorry, I thought I had. That shows you if, you know, if it comes down to twenty percent, to fifteen percent, to ten percent. Didn't we think it's about forty-seven thousand or fifty thousand dollars a point?
Yeah, it was forty-two.
Forty-two.
Yeah, every point is, is equivalent to just under forty-two thousand dollars.
So I think when we were looking at it, even if it, if it comes down to ten, we still have significant. Um, gap to fill, but it's more in the typical big gap to fill category. Um, if we go off of. Kind of past experience knowing, all right, if it's twenty-six point nine today, maybe it's going to be fourteen when we close. That's still going to be double of what it was last year. So we're still, we still end up with like a million two. Seven, million two to million five range of gap. But I can share, I'm happy to share those. I've been playing around with some charts. I need to see it too. That almost feels like best case scenario is that we're going to get fifty percent reduction.
Is it okay if we ask a question? Sure. Given that we have this table up right now, uh, asking our town official partners here. Which, you know, what, what's a reasonable scale here for what you can carry this year? And I know your numbers are not fixed either, right? But, you know, part of, part of the process here is trying to understand the implications on the town side of what it. Of what our budget might do, you know, in terms of, uh, uh, you raising the money or finding the money, right? Uh, so, you know, at what point is it likely that? You know, we, we trigger some correction override, whatever you want to call it from your side. Uh, you know, versus you being able to fund company. And I know you can't give us a definitive, but a sense of scale or a sense of applying would be helpful here.
I'm not sure you guys answered that question since you're not sessioned or. I'm sure it wasn't.
We can, we can tell you our individual opinions based on our experience.
Any insight would be helpful.
Well, I mean, it's from an Essex perspective. I mean, you take our, our two and a half percent levy. And add to what our new growth, we're talking it in a total increase available in our budget of. Under five hundred and twenty thousand dollars total, town budget and split. And we have two contracts to negotiate this year. So tight doesn't begin to describe it. But this, from, from what I know at this moment, and the state hasn't come out with the levy limit sheets yet, but doing rough math. Which we're pretty good at. That's not where we are.
Which. So Manchester side. Two and a half just to grow the, the new revenues, totally revenue around nine hundred thousand. We do have some excess money capacity. Eight hundred thousand excess money capacity, so we couldn't go higher than two and a half and now probably two over right boat. Still, the impact of the tax. It's a little bit short because you don't have that.
If, if I may add.
Wait.
We, there is another side to this. Because if to bring, if you bring that number down by eliminating programs that are important to our voters. We have a different problem. And we need. Both chapters, obviously, need to balance. Oh, pocketbook versus education.
Uh, I think Nina was actually. Okay, or.
Yeah, I just did note.
No, no, it's, it really has to do with reserves because I think, um, there was conversation, I think Erica brought it up. Um, I know you haven't adopted your reserve policy, but you're circling around the eight percent. And I think, um, the finance, the policy subcommittee meeting, or maybe it was last school committee. You said, um, you're probably going to be over that eight percent unadopted budget number by, I can't remember the number, two fifty maybe? Two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So I'm just wondering if, um, that is being considered. And I'm sure it's on the table, but it hasn't been talked about tonight as a part of using.
Well, I think I want to go back to my opening comments, and if I'm out of turn here to just stop me. We're not, we're not in the business tonight of solving the problem. We're in the business of sharing what our problem is with you. If you think some sense of, um, what you'd want us to think about going forward. That's both us as we go to work on the technical side and the committee as they think about policy. So I don't think anything is off the table at this point, given the magnitude of the problem. And I don't know if that answers your question, but I don't know if we want to get into like, we should use this much more reserves tonight. I can't imagine, even in our initial conversations, I think there's some question about what will be the right number of reserves to use. Well, and it's also, I think that. The reason that we had originally asked Pam to put this together based on a level services carry forward budget is because we wanted a better understanding of just how deep we've gotten into that hole of using the reserves and having that. Amount compound over time. And you've said it at town meeting yourself, we can't use one-time money to fund an operating budget, right? And so we keep doing that and we're trying to keep the ship afloat. But at some point, water's going to start coming in, you know, we can only bail ourselves out so fast.
We totally understand that. I think, I think from a taxpayer perspective, it has been, um, your, your reserve levels have stayed pretty steady. Even though there's been a lot contributed to the budget over time. So, you know, the three fifty contributed last year, clearly, you know, I know it, it gets. Put in as revenue stream, but clearly isn't used because you had a million four in E and D. So, um, it, you know, it's, it, it's sort of refills your reservoir every year because of your, um. Whatever happens with your budget or with interest income. We have the same thing in Essex, right? We fund capital projects with free cash. The reason why we're able to do that is because, you know, we have some free cash at the end of the year. So we purchase a vehicle instead of financing a vehicle, which in turn saves taxpayers a lot of money. So I understand the problem. I just, there was some conversation about it and I didn't care. I don't. We don't expect to solve the problem. We just expect to be able to pay them all together tonight.
So in the spirit of not trying to solve the problem, but simply frame it and make an observation. Um, even if you neutralize the insurance issue and you flatlined it, you're still looking at a five, you know. Five percent increase versus the ten percent increase just by my rough. So from an Essex standpoint, I think it, it's interesting because, um, you know, our. You know, our two and a half percent plus growth, we don't have any cumulative. Uh, excess funding capacity because we used it all in the year that it, the override didn't pass. So that is a difference between Essex. I think Essex has more capital, feeling sort of capital needs this year. But, um, so either way, it's going to be difficult. I don't have a solution, so. Um, but I think it is important to note that the, the insurance is not the sole problem here. It's just, it's a major compounding.
I think I'd push back on that and say the insurance. Is not based on trend, but it's based on our utilization, which means it's going to be a multi-year problem. So even if we can neutralize it this year, let's call it neutralizing it ten percent, it's going to be high again next year. And I, the way this played out the year, we got the crazy one. Um, right after the override was, it was in the twenties and then the next year it was seventeen or eighteen percent. So the lower we get it this year, I think we need to expect that it's going to be achieved. I do think the insurance is a considerable problem this year unless. We see something different. In going out to bid, there are minimal options as you're, as you're learning. Because of the, um, harbor pilgrim overtake of Tufts that leaves Harbor Pilgrim. Maya and then some of the larger national companies that we were talking about, which are part of G I C. But G I C would be an eighteen-month process if we were to, and look at that, and there's contract language. As that if we were to go to the G I C, that we return there. Split rates to eighty twenty. So we do have some obstacles. The program design is embedded in the contract. So we've got not too many tools to use.
That's a follow-up on that.
Sure.
Sorry, um, but it sort of builds on the questions Greg was asking. So the program design is embedded in the contract, but not the carrier.
Correct.
So you can shop it around.
We have a carrier, Sarah.
Erica.
I just want to put one comment about reserves, um, because I know you have all been listening to this discussion for years. And it, it's been hard to get our head around, um, and our reserve. It have changed, um, and the way we've looked at them have changed. So I just, I want to make sure that we're thinking about, and, and you guys, our partners are thinking about it in the same way. We have an excess and efficiency reserve. We have a stabilization reserve. The E and D, I hear you. It feels like it has felt like in, in a very specific subset of years. That even though we have contributed a portion, we have ended up around the same amount. I am also very cognizant that we have a new business director who is budgeting differently. Um, and I really, I trust her when she says we are coming out closer to the black. And when I hear that we actually under budgeted a little bit for healthcare, I guess that supports the point. Uh, so I, I want to be cautious about how much we think about relying on the E and D. But the other, the thing I really want to say is when it comes to stabilization, as I've dug into that reserve. That reserve is, is about to drop pretty dramatically. I mean, just, just with the five hundred thousand that we've already allocated for the, um. Feasibility study, we're looking at, you know, that it goes from two point nine to one point seven just in the next year. And when you look at this building, it doesn't feel like it because it's still, I still remember when it was built, but this building has.
But this building has a lot of costs that we're trying to be cautious about how we approach them. And I think the towns want us to be cautious and to be budgeting and planning. So that we are not suddenly looking at using stabilization funds to fund our operating budget. So just, just so that we're all thinking about the reserve funds in the same way. That's just my bit of context as I continue to try and dig into it.
And I think we appreciate that, Erica, but I, I do need to say that, um. While we're making, um, and I know, you know, we talked about half-life of the building and, and, you know, trying to keep off work replacing. You can replace, I think, kitchen equipment here this year or this fiscal year. Um, as a capital planner or about to, yet at Essex Elementary, they barely have working, um, kitchen equipment. So those kids only get certain things for lunch because that kitchen equipment has not been replaced. So I think our, the, the investment of $500,000 is moving us toward that building replacement, which I think. Needs to be in all of our minds that we need to get to that end goal because, as Pam has said a thousand times. There's a huge capital need in that building if we can't get a renovation or a new building for Essex Elementary. And I'll say it again because I say it every time, the final pillar of regionalization to complete our agreement that we started 24 years ago. To replace that building and, and get everybody sort of on, on a level playing field. Um, so it's difficult for taxpayers in Essex to hear, we're replacing things at half-life here. But they're still in a 1950s building with a boiler that's put together with, with, um. Okay, a lot of welding and outside bubble gum, but I hope to get yelled at about that. And, and, you know, kitchen equipment and our, you know, certain kids can't go to that building because it, it isn't accessible. Um, so the investment of a half a million dollars out of the stabilization fund is some of the best dollars I think we can spend. Moving forward together to, to get to that spot where we're not going to be spending money out of our pockets with, with no state money. Or, um, major capital projects if we can't get this building project pushed to the finish line. So I think it is a goal of everybody. It's a goal that we discussed at the joint finance committee meeting. You know, it's, it's on the forefront of, I think, everybody's thought process here. So. I think we, keeping this tight is important to get to that end goal.
Probably worth noting that we had to replace the freezer because it was leaking gas. And we had to replace the refrigeration system because it failed. So. I take the point, but they weren't.
No, I.
They were. Unless I missed something.
And I, I think. Unless I'm missing something, our menus at Memorial and Essex Elementary are the same because. I did wonder when you said that my child does not like school lunch at Essex Elementary. So I did just look it up. And unfortunately, he wouldn't be doing any better.
That's not good. Let's not talk about those.
It's another issue we could wrestle.
So this is a, it is part of a budget related question. I can realize it's, um, it comes from a different perspective. Um, it has to actually do a succession planning. It's something I have to talk about every day within work. And it's a key piece because it's about planning for the future. And I know Pam was great to say that she'd stay through this year 26. But I sort of look at it to where we are today, just wanting to make sure that the school committee standpoint, it's getting into the agenda, it's getting thought of. Because obviously we can't, I'm not saying we want to, but if we do stay, I don't know, but I want to think that we're having. We seem to like the community involved in everything. So if we want the community to have some input or just how the process works. Or is the school committee going to kind of keep moving forward if Pam stays? It's a balance and I know it's hard, but. I work with leaders every day of work and the first thing, the first day of work is you have to work with us to create a succession plan. So this is not in any way a critique. It is just policy. It's part of leadership. It's part of professional group and building and et cetera. So I just want to put out that, um, knowing, talking about this year 26 budget, 27, we know we're going to run a corner. And succession planning is a really important piece to that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments online or in person? Does the school committee have any additional comments or statements?
So I'll just say that. You know, looking, looking out a couple of years. I don't see how we, even, even with concerted efforts to find efficiencies and. Whatnot, I don't see how we carry on in this mode of year by year down a long-term plan. Because we're going to need a correction at some point and soon. Uh, whether, whether we can stretch our reserves two years, three years, right? That's a little bit of an unknown. But we need to think about that in terms of the Essex building project because we're going to be asking for a lot of capital then. Just given what I'm hearing from the towns and where we are likely going to be even next year with insurance, Pam's point.
And I'm hoping.
Hope you're on. But I think, you know, I think we need to reengage with. So I, you know, I'm all for doing that, but I want to make sure that we have a good chance of success, which means that we have a plan for it and we have support for it. Um, and so to me. We need to, we need to figure out how to reengage with the town and think through this planning. Multi-year planning so that we can set ourselves, and when we go, we have to ask so that we set ourselves up for the next three years or four years after that. Otherwise, we'll be back as, you know, we can't, we can't go back two years later and ask for another operational override. So I think. We have some, we have some work to do on, on long-term planning.
Go ahead, Teresa.
Um, I agree that, that it is important for the school committee to consider, uh, how we move forward with this. Um, you know, same pattern. Um, I also agree that, um. The, there is a correction that's going to need to come. I don't know what format it'll take, but I will just say Essex needs an override. It's overdue. It's not just for the school budget. We have a number of departments that are being underfunded. It's been forever since we've had one. I don't like it and I don't want to spend more money, but it is time. And. Whether or not we create a long-term plan together with our town partners. That seems like it has support and engagement from everybody sitting at the table. This committee is charged with the help of the district and we have to be able to. Look beyond that because the players and table change. And the four-year process that I witnessed of, of going through that plan and getting support, it was going to be. That year and this was, and then the players changed and the conversation changed and the tone changed and the support changed. So whether or not the support and the players and everything else stays the same. The school committee still has to be prepared to move forward with the district. So I agree that long-term planning is important, but if either or both towns doesn't choose to. Um, have an override, we need to be prepared to control what we can actually control. Um, and I think that it's really important for us to consider that. It may not come in that format. It may not come and override may not pass. Essex may not choose to do one. You know, to go for one. If we do, I think we should do it soon before we come up for a school building vote, but, um. We have to be prepared to move forward either way because that's what we're trying to do here.
If it only consists of, only some meetings where there's back and forth, there are lots of things to ask for questions back.
Uh, well, we kind of already closed public call, but. It, it is a.
It's almost as important what Teresa's saying in that. I believe, wholeheartedly, I speak as an individual, community member of Essex. We want good schools. We will support our schools. It's to what Antonella was saying, that it's not about putting one town against the other. And it is asking what our level of service is. Because for all the students, for all the parents that might be listening or might listen to this video. Leveld services to me right now are no librarian, no school language, like lower school language, no advisor groups. No substitute teachers, no midterms, no exams, no summer reading. I could keep this list going. And that's at the high school level. I don't know what's going on at the middle school level, but there is clearly something happening. Because whether we want to say our enrollment's the same as others, we know other towns have enrollment drops. I brought this up seven years ago, at that time to a different school committee member, that we need to be aware of the demographics. Now, hard it is to move into these two towns. We are getting to be too expensive. But that doesn't mean that the school just operates the same way. Essex and Manchester, I believe, will pay for really good schools. We have been paying for really good schools. And Essex, because of the enforcement, has been in an override amount if you look at what our percent has been. But if you just fundamentally look at it, no one can explain our program. Leveled services, if it is truly to say leveled services. I, I would like the library. I would think sixth grade teaching, parents would like sixth grade language. So it's having hard discussions to realize the leveled services might not be needing what the community is asking for.
No, I agree. You're right. You know, it really hasn't been level services. Aside from all this, it's been cuts after cuts after cuts. Um. So that's a question that the school committee turns up and discusses every year. Uh, and we discuss it from the lens of our three main stakeholders, right? Uh, we look at our students and what they need to have a successful public education. We look at it from a lens of our stakeholders or our employees. And then we look at it out of the lens of our, you know, all of our taxpayers in the two towns, right? Uh, and every year we try to do our best to manage all of that. So. Take that for what it is, but that's what we do every single year. So, you know, I agree that the verbiage can be, you know, we try to simplify this, uh, process. Um, so sometimes we use words and language that. May not, uh, accurately address the exact situation of how a school operates. But, uh. That's part of our goal is to try to simplify this process as much as possible.
And I guess I just, when we were talking about a carry-forward budget. There are a lot of things on that list that have no price tag and there are clearly some disagreements about how we're doing business, which is fair. Um, and I think they're good questions. So. I, I, we don't know how to make it any plainer that basically we're talking about in staffing headcount. Number of classes offered, frequency of specials at the element, very fundamental, just technical aspects of the budget. Not how the debt chairs are arranged within. So those are some other conversations and, and other discussions to be had. So I think we just want to be careful when we're having conversations that we don't conflict the two.
I might be not conflating the two. Is it correct to say that level services mean the same class size and not necessarily the same staff headcount?
Yep.
Because sometimes our staffing levels do change.
Yep.
But that doesn't mean that we have not carried level services forward. It just means that. We did not need that position anymore to deliver the same.
Right. So when we, and it's easiest to see at the elementary. So when. Classes were, enrollment was declining, when we got to the right point, we could retire a teacher and not return a teacher. We consolidate from three sections to two segments. That's level services. You're still keeping a base, same basic class size. You can do it with two people instead of three. It gets much harder to. Show it and articulate it at the secondary, but that's the same basic principle at the secondary. When I say secondary, I'm saying high school. It's basically the same course. Number of course offerings, meaning students have a seven-period day that rotate, uh, seven, they take seven courses. Over the course of seven days, they rotate, dropping two every day, having five classes a day. Kids can sign up for seven classes. So we need to have enough staffing to cover every kid having a class schedule of seven. Ensuring that every teacher only teaches five as they're prep, you know, so it's all of those pieces, which is why. It's a little less cut and, right, cut and clear. And. You know, I, I wanted to circle back to, I think Antonella brought up, or someone brought up the schedule at the beginning. We're still working the schedule issue. Um, similar to healthcare, there's a lot of language embedded in the contract about how. The, the schedules are set up at the middle school and the elementary, the middle school, the contract codifies that the. Middle school will be a six-day rotating drop and the middle, the high school will be a seven-day rotating drop. And we've, they've beaten their heads again. It's the wall. There's probably no way to do it. So we, we might have to negotiate to create a new schedule, even by the two. So there are a lot of built-in steps to a, a contract-driven environment. But nobody's given up. They're still looking for a solution that may, um, be more simple than, than complex and trying to solve that problem. So we can start to look at opportunities for sharing. So I think people are working very hard to find new solutions. Um, I think a solution was brought last year and it, it felt like the walkaway was, don't. If it's being driven solely by finance and not by student need, you want to relook and that's what they went back to and get this year. So if, if things are changing and conditions are changing, we could bring a different ones to that one.
Then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Next second. All those in favor? Yes. Thank you everyone for your time.
Hey. Get back on the. Yeah. Hey, we didn't say all of that. I'm just talking.